The Milford School Committee meeting for this Thursday, December eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Happy holidays, everyone. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, soon to be Happy New Year's. Our last meeting in two thousand and fourteen. We'll get ourselves started with our first agenda item, which is the approval of minutes. I trust everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes. Any questions? Mr. Walsh.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion? Thank you. I'll take a motion from Mike. A second from Joe. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is our invitation to speak. Do we have anybody here for invitation to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Next, we will have announcements and correspondence.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would just like to say how proud I am of the Milford High School students and the staff. I had the opportunity to attend the first varsity basketball game Friday night in Hope Dale. And I wish Donnie was here, because he'd be very proud of his son. I was literally, my wife and I were sitting right next to the student section. And Donnie's son came up the stairs with a couple of his pals, and as soon as he spotted me, he came right over and said, "Mr. Walsh, how are you?" Put his hand out and shook my hand. But the student behavior was just unbelievable. You know, just a fan base, a lot of fun. But I take my hat off, because at one point I looked down in the corner, and the girls' varsity team was sitting on the floor quiet, watching the game. Richie Pierre-Gostavo was there, Kerry was there, and the athletic director were there. Hats off to the three of them to show support. So I just want to publicly say how proud I am as a school committee member of that whole event.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. At your seats for the committee, if you haven't completed it already, is the Conflict of Interest Law. So the sheet that you have at your place. Patrick, I think I gave you one, but I think you might have already done this for the school building committee.
Yeah, I just sign them when they come in front of me.
Okay, I think we have.
And I make sure I don't commit conflicts of interest, so I feel covered.
Probably have two or three on record for you already, but if you want to do a fourth one. This is just to acknowledge the information that Melissa sent out some time back, that you didn't receive it. So if you'd be so kind to sign that, and then just send it over to me, and I'll have that on file. That's all I have under that.
Excellent. No, just, again, happy holidays to everyone, and had another successful calendar year. So we put two thousand and fourteen to bed and get ready for two thousand and fifteen and diving into our budget time. And it's an exciting time of year, lots of holiday concerts, lots of things going on. It's always great to see, I had an opportunity, I was at Stacy Middle School about a week ago, and had an opportunity to interact with some of the staff and talk about some of the activities they're doing. And, you know, it never ceases to amaze me, being in the schools, how engaged they've got the students, even right down to the end. And I know it's like herding cats sometimes, as we get close to the holidays. But certainly my hats off to all the teachers, administrators, and wish everyone a happy holidays. All right. Next on the agenda, we're actually going to skip over the robotics program as we're waiting for one of our presenters. Move on to the Milford School Committee Superintendent Operation Protocols. So for two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. Joe, I think you're, are you spearheading this?
Sure. Yeah. So as all of you know, we've been working very closely with the MASC and participating in their district governance program. One of our assignments was to establish operating protocols for the school committee and the superintendent. And the operating protocols essentially are a series of ground rules that will help the committee focus its energy and its effort and work more efficiently and effectively as a team. So in front of you is a draft of the protocols that we had put together as part of that training session. We also went back and reviewed the protocols with the policy subcommittee, and then circled back a second time at the following training session to confirm the final protocols that were drafted and that are in front of you. So if you'd like, I could go through and read them, and then I would ask the committee essentially to adopt the protocols which follow the best practices of other effective school committees.
Just opening up and see if there's any members that have any questions. See if everyone's had an opportunity to review them.
I mean, I don't think we need a reading of them, honestly. And, you know, I mean, I've read through these as part of the policy subcommittee. I was in Chicago, I think, the last time we discussed this with the governance training. And, I mean, I don't have any problem with any of the language here. I mean, it really just says we're going to be respectful towards each other and of the school committee. And so I don't see any issues here, frankly. We already comply with these protocols, honestly. So I see no reason why we shouldn't formalize it. I don't see there's any issue here, or any readings required. I mean, unless you really, unless you really want to.
No, I'm fine if you're ready. If you guys are okay with it, I'm sure everyone's already.
I don't have anything else to do, Joe, but, I mean, yeah.
Right? We want to get out of here on time, too.
So.
I just wanted to say that especially as a new member, I think this is going to be very helpful for other new members in the future to be able to read through something and have a sense of, these are the understandings, and this is the way this body operates, and this is kind of our foundation of operation. It's, so I really appreciate the work that's gone into this. It's going to be very helpful.
And the intent would be each year for the committee to adopt the protocols. So after each election season, we bring in essentially a new committee. We would review these at that point in time, and everybody would sign off on them. So you'd have that.
Each subsequent committee would have to. There's no, we can't bind any future committee to any agreement. So this is an agreement for whatever city committee was. So, yeah, we'd have to do that. Yeah.
Okay. So if there are no further questions, if it's something that the committee would like to adopt, certainly open to any motions.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the operating protocol.
That's what I was waiting for.
You're kind of hesitant there, Joe.
I was like, wait a minute, is this something?
It's how a bunch of other hands go on.
I love this thing, you started with it, go ahead.
I made a motion to adopt the protocol.
Take a motion from, a motion from Joe, a second from Mike. All in favor?
Fine, yeah.
Unanimous in favor. All right. Thank you so much. All right.
I see a robot over there.
And we are going to go back to our item four on the agenda, and we are cooking right along here. But we have a whole bunch of guests that have just joined us. So we're actually going to go to our Milford Robotics Program presentation. And as one of my other members just said, I think I saw a robot just come in. So, gentlemen, please come on up, and we'd love to hear about this great program.
Mr. Robot does not like carpets, so we're going to keep a close eye on him. He likes the floors better. But boys run them. We have our.
Sorry, Ian, come here. Hold on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just by way of introduction, I'd like to thank both Rich Johnson and Paul Peliquin and the students for coming out this evening, and the committee for the short time on the agenda, just to acknowledge this program. We talk about so many great things that we do in our programs at Milford Round Curriculum, and I think it's great when we have the opportunity to showcase some of that work. So around the work that we're doing in science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics, and you guys particularly taking on the robotics work that you've been doing. It would be helpful for the school committee to get a perspective from what are kids doing in your classes? What is robotics about? Where are we headed with it? And then, of course, we want to see what this guy can do, so. That's it, I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen.
Go ahead, guys, you're up.
All right, I guess I'll start.
Okay, Paul.
All right. The robotics at Stacy, I have the kids, actually, it fits quite well with STEM. They work on, they work using MindStorm Lego kits. And they learn the programming. Programming is really cool. It was originally designed for the Mars rovers, turns out. And using the iconic programming, they create a little device, and they have to program it to solve certain things. And I've been doing this, wow, how many years now? It was about six, at least, I think. Anyway, where I'd like to go is to have us have our kids with First Lego League, which is Lego competition. Goes to a regional competition, if they qualify state, and if they qualify national. So, I'm trying to think what else. I think that's about it. And then we have the high school program.
First off, I'd like to thank Bob for allowing, giving us the opportunity to expand the program. Up until last January, we were using materials from the early two thousands. And Bob was kind enough to step in, provide us with Mr. Robot, who.
What's the deal, Andrew? He is connecting, okay.
To provide us with Mr. Robot and new NXT kits, which a couple of the boys will show you some of the things they do. These are kits that the students have to put together and program. It's all hands-on. I think the boys will all tell you they really enjoy the class.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They do a great job. Bob and I are going to sit down, I think, after the holidays and talk about expanding the program even further. I know Paul is going into competitions, and that's something I'd like to do at the high school as well. But something we have to sit down and chat about. This, robotics is great, because the kids have to think outside the box, they have to think for themselves. You assign them a task, and they have to come up with the correct project and the programming and all that. I think we can call ourselves bystanders. Just set them in the right direction, and let them come up with a correct. If there are issues, come up with the correct solutions. And generally, they do. And generally, I hope Mr. Robot gets going. Is he going, Andrew? There he goes. He does not like carpets. He does not like carpets. And we have had him out in the halls, roaming around the halls a few times. This robot came in in a kit. The students had to put him all together. And we had software issues with him, and Andrew Leclerc and Leo spoke with the company several times. They talked to the people that came up with the design and finally got him going. It took us, how many phone calls did it take, boys? Many, many phone calls to get him going, but we did get him going. And it's a great experience for them, because they were on the phone with designers of things like this, talking to the designers. Just a fantastic thing, great experience for the boys. Okay, run him, Andrew. Hopefully, is he running? When we have, I don't want to take up too much time.
That is awesome.
That is just awesome.
Yeah, so you can see he's ready to tip over, he does not like the carpet. A couple of the other boys have kits from, that Bob was kind enough to purchase for us, from the NXT kits from Lego.
Yeah, he doesn't like carpets either.
They don't like carpets either. We should have had this meeting in the halls.
We had roving cameras, we'd be all over it.
So you didn't put them on the table?
You want to put them on the table? You can bring them up.
I was going to say, if you want to put them on the table?
Yep. Put them up here. This is Alex, Alex is a sophomore.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we, why don't we have, ask the guys after they're done with their demonstration, if we can just have you guys just introduce yourselves? Let us know what grade you're in, and what got you interested? What do you guys like about the program?
You get to be creative about it. You get to do what you like to do.
My name's Leo Morata, I'm a junior, and I think this was a great experience, because it really just gave us the basic parts, and from there, we had to follow the manual step by step, put it all together, every little bump in the road, you had to call pits go, see what's going on. You know, every little problem that came, we had to solve by ourselves. So it was really a learning experience for all of us.
It took us, since the beginning of the semester, to put it together. We just got him going a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we just got him going. Rest of the boy, Josh, you introduce yourself.
I'm Josh Lanham. I'm really here for moral support.
Guys in the back.
For one of your friends or for Mr. Robot?
Guys in the back?
Yeah, I'm Andrew Leclerc, I'm a senior. And I just, I was kind of on the phone with the company a lot, trying to figure it out with the robot, because we had some problems initially, they didn't send some of the things we needed. So I just talked to the company a lot about that, and put it together and all that.
I'm Ian. Sorry, Dylan.
I'm a senior, and I helped put together the robot, and I let Andrew and Leo finish the program and stuff, get it rendered.
Boys down here?
Hello, my name's Jason Pinto, and I helped do the tank bot.
I'm Jeremy Phoel, I'm a senior, and I helped build both of those.
I'm Alex, I'm a sophomore. I, me and him built the elephant. Took us three, four days.
I put the pressure on when Bob told us that he wanted us to come in, I think last Thursday. I said, "Boys, we're going to put these back together," because they had already put them together once. I said, "Boys, we're going to put these back together." And Mr. Johnson, we don't have time, yes you do. And they got it done, they got it done. This is, this, how many steps, Alex?
Two hundred and fifty-one.
Two hundred and fifty-one steps to put him together.
And are you controlling that with your iPhone?
Yeah.
That is cool.
It's Bluetooth. It's Bluetooth.
That seems like a much more useful function for Bluetooth than having to talk on the phone. How most of us.
So what we will do, are working together, is when Mike, they get through with my program, they'll come here. So it will transition right in.
So we're doing it with a gap right now in grade eight, because it's not a robotics program in grade eight, but we're obviously planning for the transition with the middle school merger. So Paul's working to make that happen. So it's, in fact, just if I may, just to speak before we see the tank bot, is Paul wanted to run sort of trials on the Lego competition.
Yeah.
We were too late this year to enter the contest. We were going to enter the competition for next year.
Right.
But we wanted to, for the kids, given the authentic experience of actually using the specific challenge.
Yes.
The table had to be built, and certain things to go along with the competition that we had to get ready. And Rich's students were good enough to build that table, and then bring that to Middle, to Stacy Middle School.
And that's what I'm using, that's what I'm using this year.
How's that working out?
It's working great.
Mitch Prokopis and one of my independent study students put it together. And Bob was kind enough to have him over for pizza for lunch.
Oh, yeah, I threw up his shirt in my office.
It's great.
Yeah. It was great, because you see the school's working cooperatively, and then you're building a feeder program, and something that's really obviously exciting for kids, so. This is just, this is a highlight of my day.
It really is incredible, because I took Robotics One last year, and we originally had a little robot that we wrote the programming for on the computer, and we brought him through the maze, and now we're taking it one step further. We're building, you know, five-foot robots, and we're even controlling it with our phones now. So it's really all just building together.
Is Submersibles on the radar, too?
I don't know, Bob, are they? We have a pool. That was a different, that was a different program.
You know, just last night, there was a show, and I wish I knew what channel it was. I think it was maybe National Geographic or something like that, but there was a show on robotics. And they actually toured a company here in Massachusetts that does walking, and they talked about the balance and how important that was. And it's funny that you have the elephant, there was a company in Germany that was working with the automakers, you know, their arms that literally put all the cars together in the assembly line. They're huge, and they're very dangerous. So there's a company in Germany that actually went to the zoo to see what animals do, and were fascinated by how strong an elephant's trunk was. And they're designing a robotic arm to put cars together based on the, did you guys see this?
No.
No?
No? It was just on last night, so I'm sure if you do a quick Google search, you'll find it. But they were talking about how they were going to use this elephant trunk arm to replace the auto, just for safety alone. And anyway, just really cool stuff. When you guys were presenting, if you had looked at all of our faces, we're all like, you know, we're all kids here.
There's a company up on one twenty-eight called Boston Dynamics that are doing a lot of work with the Defense Department, building robots. And I've shown the boys some of the videos of some of the things that they're doing up there. Really amazing things to help the Defense Department out, such as building robots so that men don't have to go into serious situations, rather use the robots. So some great stuff is being done up there.
That's great. Mike?
It's interesting, I have an employee whose father works for Toyota in Tennessee. And what Donnie was saying is, they've actually taken it, predominantly the robots were always used in the manufacturing of the automobile. Toyota has taken it to the next level, they actually assign them tasks. And you can be walking on a tour in the assembly plant, and robots will be coming by you, either carrying objects, mail, whatever, and they program them every day. They can program to do different tasks, and they go, when the plant's running, like right now, they're getting ready to build the Lexus here as well. So the plant's gearing up to go six days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and they can run the robots. You know, they have an entire repair department for the robots, but he said the tasks that are being done, so forget just in the assembly of the automobile, the actual job tasks within the plant. He said, "You have to see it to believe it." You know, it's amazing.
Well, thank you, guys. This is, the first thing that came to my mind was, very, very impressive, and.
Thank you for having us.
Boy, I'll be honest with you, what a great time to be a student, and just some of this stuff. I'm sitting here going, boy, I really wish I could back to school. It's great.
I was nervous when Bob asked me whether anybody would come, any of the students would come, and obviously, the showing has been tremendous. They're glad, they're happy to show these things off, they really are.
They should be proud.
Yeah, you should be very proud. We're certainly very proud of you guys. This is fantastic.
My students are performing arts.
Right, I know you have a concert tonight.
Concert with that conflicted.
Now, we didn't, I don't know if we saw Tank Bot move. Did we see him?
Yeah.
He was crawling along a little earlier.
What happens to Mr. Robot at the end of the semester or the year? Does he get taken apart and rebuilt by the next year, or?
That's a good question. He's a pretty expensive dude.
You have to buy a new one, Bob.
Yeah. He's a pretty expensive dude, right.
He's pretty expensive. I wish Bob could buy us one every year, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay.
But I haven't thought about that.
Okay.
It would be really hard, I've talked to the boys about it, it'd be really hard to take him apart.
Yeah.
I think, and keep him in a position where you could put him back together again. So I don't know. I haven't made a decision yet.
Then he's going to work at Toyota.
Can we expand them?
So one of the things, I guess, that would be sort of our final, at least my final, my question that I would have for you guys is, so how can we help, what support do you guys need at this point to continue this program and to continue to do all the great things that clearly this group is doing?
I'm just making sure that we have access to the, all the equipment that we need. I mean, over time, it's going to start to, you know, wear out, burn out, et cetera. Just making sure that we can get the equipment necessary, and necessary to expand it. You can see, just looking at this, how many small parts there are. And no matter how many times you'll ask a student, please be careful not to lose the small parts, they will do so. I try to go around at the end of the class and look under the tables, and I will find lots of small parts. But that's an issue, you know, just to keep, get more equipment coming in, to keep expanding the program in that manner. We were fortunate that we were able to use some Perkins money to purchase several more of these kits. So that was great. But just financially is the most important thing. Obviously, these things are expensive. I think Mr. Robot's close to four thousand dollars, so.
Is there grant money that's available? I would imagine through different companies and everything else, that there's some grant money that might be available as well on things like this?
Well, we did use the Perkins, the Perkins grant, to fund some of the things. My kids, I think the PTO bought, when I first got them years ago.
Excellent, well, we are, your presentation is timely. We are getting ready to gear up for budget season, starting the first beginning of January. So certainly look forward to seeing some great things. And gentlemen, thank you guys again for coming in.
Thank you for coming.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you, guys, great job.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
That's just, that is so cool.
See a Superman cape on?
Yes, he does.
It's great.
All right.
How to cut you along.
I know, right?
Yeah, perfect. Sell cars, can you sell cars?
Yeah.
It seems so much better than half a year of civics class, though.
Yes. All right, so we'll move on to our next piece, which is our first reading file, file ace for bullying policy. So the policy subcommittee?
Yep. And so you should all have the red line version there in front of you. There were two primary changes as a result of some legal requirements. The first was the reference, previously, the policy referenced children, and that was revised to also incorporate bullying that may happen between staff and children, or staff to staff. So you'll see some changes there. And then the second, which is more prevalent, there were new guidelines and procedures regarding the reporting and the responding to bullying and the retaliation. So you'll see that most of the red line language is in regards to that. So essentially, what they provided is a clear process for reporting, responding to the report of bullying, investigating the circumstances, and then making a determination that's based on facts and circumstances. There's obviously a lot of red line language there, I'm not going to read it all to you, I'm sure you've reviewed it. This is a first reading, so I don't know if you have any comments or thoughts at all.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of the changes to this are driven entirely by the Massachusetts general laws. I mean, that's really where these revisions came from. And the last time that we revised this policy, which was three or four years ago, it was driven because of the changes in the Massachusetts laws.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, there's not, I know everybody's read it, and you see that what is in red, we really shouldn't change, because then we wouldn't be in compliance with the laws. We're certainly welcome to do whatever we want to do, but this way, we're sort of, we stay compliant, so.
Yeah. One of the questions that I did have with regards to this, because one of the things that's part of the policies that we asked to, that I asked to have reviewed a couple of weeks ago as part of this, was any policy did any level of zero tolerance language in it?
Oh, yeah, we actually, thank you for, we should have mentioned that at the outset. So we did review all of our policies, and I'm very pleased to say that the Milford Public Schools do not have a whole lot of zero tolerance language. As a matter of fact, zero tolerance is only mentioned in one policy, and that's in a memorandum of understanding with the Milford Police. So.
And that's in the can book, it's not actually a policy.
It's not actually a policy, right. So, and actually, you know, it didn't surprise me that that wasn't the case, because we have, honestly, as they popped up over the, it was fifteen years ago, all this zero tolerance language started finding its way into schools. And we've done a pretty good job over the past five years or so of sort of easing that and letting our administrators use their discretion when they're working with students. I mean, these are highly educated, well-paid employees of the town, and they should have an opportunity to use their discretion when they're discipling students or when they're interacting with parents and teachers. And so our policies reflect that. So I can say with a great deal of confidence that we have not adopted zero tolerance policies that allow any of our administrators to either act thoughtlessly or hide behind policy language. Everything is upfront, and everything will be addressed, and there's an opportunity for the public and the administration to comment and work with all of our administrators in the application of those policies. So I was very, I was very happy with the result, honestly.
And in reading through this, I was pleased to see no zero tolerance policy language, which is good. Obviously, I'm like.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment on that as well. When the policy subcommittee didn't meet, and I'm sure they'll update that later, the one area where there was the zero, zero tolerance language, I reached out and subsequently met with the chief of police about that one memorandum of understanding, and we both agreed that this language is dated, and we have a more up-to-date memorandum of understanding that will now be put into the school handbook. So as we make school handbook updates, we'll include that in there as well. So that one, the one area that we did find is set for revision already.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions or comments from any other members? Okay. I know this is a first reading, we don't have it on the agenda this evening for taking a vote on it, so I know it is a first reading. Any recommendations for the policy subcommittee to go back and make any adjustments? Okay?
No.
I don't, I don't feel that any adjustments necessary. And I certainly don't want to rush the committee in any way, but I don't think.
Well, if we feel that way, can we just vote it in?
We can take a, we can take a motion. There's nothing on yet that says we're expecting a vote this evening, but.
I'll make a motion.
Take a motion from Don.
I'll second the motion.
Second from Patrick. All in favor? Motion passes. All right.
Getting hunted so far tonight, Joe.
All right. So we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Bob, you're up.
Yes, first item on the agenda, transition planning grades three through eight. Just wanted to give the committee an update on that, as we look to, you know, we're still on mark. We had a Woodland School Building Committee meeting last night, well on track for an August two thousand and sixteen opening. But with an opening of a school, there's a lot of work ahead of that. Besides the design of that school, is the transition of staff from eighth, grade eight, to Stacy Middle School, from grade five to Woodland School. And I wanted to just let the committee know that we're well on our way with that. And I wanted to just let the committee know that, uh, we're well on our way with that. We have a meeting set for January fifth, um, uh, in the new year with the prin- first with the principals, uh, to talk about what their needs are. We envision developing a frequently asked questions page, um, for staff who may, as you can imagine, staff have some, you know, some trepidations about what was gonna happen, will my classroom go? And will I have the resources that I need? Uh, so staff will be very much part of this discussion as well. We'll have opportunities for staff to dialogue. We'll have social opportunities for staff to get to see one another, meet one another, and become familiar with, um, the environment at Stacy Middle School and Woodland School. So, all of this is happening with the support of the principals, and I want to let the committee know, um, it's one of the goals that I had set forth this year, and, uh, we are beginning that process. I was really happy to see the number of teachers that have stepped forward, uh, who wanna be part of orchestrating that transition planning.
I'm sorry, Jen, I didn't mean to do that. I was just gonna ask, so when we're combining two buildings, um, we already have full science labs in Middle School West, and we have s- full science labs in Middle School East, and we don't have sinks, and I don't know, fire suppression is an issue. Uh, is Rob Quinn included in these meetings, and are we budgeting for having to outfit some of these rooms with additional resources so we can conduct science in these rooms?
That's what we're looking to do. So, as part of these discussions about transition planning, we'll find out what those needs are. So, as we sit with the C T Ls, for example, in, in around science, and say, you know, what, what are the facility needs that you have, and then work that out with Rob. So, yeah, Rob will be brought into the discussion. If the, the first phase of it is just with the administrative team to say, you know, what are you envisioning around the transition? What have you done already? Then we'll begin to have a representative team of teachers and other staff who might be interested in helping the, that plan. And we'll certainly bring Bob into the, uh, Rob into the, uh, the discussion as well.
Scott, if we, if we could, just in the future, Jen, I'd like this committee to review the capital improvements required to, to make that change. I think that's an important thing for us to review.
Okay. Jen?
Um, I had a question in terms of preparing the fifth grade teachers for the transition from middle school to an elementary model, and what kind of work is being done, and what's the expectation? Or maybe you're not even at that stage of planning yet, but I remember going from a, a middle school or elementary, middle to elementary, and it was really shocking when you realize what happens in an elementary. And I'm guessing we probably have a lot of teachers who've only taught in the middle school type of model. And I would hate to see, and not saying this would happen, but fifth grade teachers kind of dumped into Woodland and feel like, okay, we're just gonna have like Stacy number two on that third floor, rather than kind of a more elementary approach.
That's just what this, this, this group is serving to do. So, it's really, we, we're moving past the point now, up until recently, the focus has been on the facility construction. What do we need? So, when the architects met with representatives also for fifth grade, so fifth grade has been part of the design process, you know, what we need for the library, what do we need for, you know, reading areas and whatever it may be, anything physical plant aspect. But now is the real process, so how does the philosophy now fit into the school? And that's what this transition planning is about. It's less about the, although some about the physical plant.
Right.
But it's really more about the philosophical pieces, the social pieces of getting staff to know one another and really work together. And that's the next, that's the next phase of this. So, we're, we're getting started on that.
As, uh, along with that piece, um, very similar with the capital improvements, um, would just also be the supply changes with regards to, as we get ready for our budget conversations and, and just understanding what supply changes it'll be. There, I would imagine there's gotta be a difference in going to an elementary model versus a, a middle school model where they're changing classes, as opposed to going to more of a self-contained, or maybe they're changing between two teachers. So, now a math teacher may be teaching math and reading.
Right.
And a science teacher may be teaching science and social studies. And, and what does that kinda look like? What do the supplies need to be? Is there not transitioning? They may not be transitioning classes. Is that part of that conversation? I'm assuming that's part of that conversation, making sure that as we get closer to budget time, it's something that, that we can start, can start to plan for as early as, as we're able to. That'll help them start to understand what that means are gonna be, rather than potentially having a budget impact later on.
Right. And you'll see that some of that in the fiscal sixteen budget discussions that we're gonna have in January as well. There's already been some forethought into that. So, just an update for you, let you know if you, certainly, uh, as you think of things or as you maybe hear things, uh, please share that with me, and we'll make sure we address that. We, we wanna do this correctly. And so, when that new school opens, and we're all proud of it, that the staff are seamlessly transitioning there to the extent we can do that, is what I'm after.
Don't say seamless. Anytime anyone's ever said seamless to me, it's been anything but seamless. It's, it's smooth or-
Smooth as-
Well, and I think it very-
I think you're thinking about Brookside floors.
And it seems like there might be some kind of a, like a, a multi-year plan for what the eventuality is gonna look like in fifth grade, because to just pull them out of what they've been used to doing and say suddenly with everything else going on, you're doing this. Now, maybe jarring to them, and that may not have a good impact on students, but if there was a plan that by X time, we're gonna, it's going to look like this, obviously with the principal's input and, and all of the staff. 'Cause it, it, it's gonna be really an incredible change for them.
It will be.
It, it would be nice, honestly, to have sort of a, a deadline, um, that we could communicate to the staff of when the plan would be ready. So, they know that this isn't something that's sort of hanging out there, that we committed as administration to delivering to them in a timely manner.
Oh, sure.
You know what I mean? I, I think that in communicating that as early as possible, I-
Yeah, I guess a little bit early was we, we had the meeting set for January.
Not today. I mean, I mean-
Yeah, but that will be an outcome of that. We wanna be able to say that we have this, 'cause we, we're well underway in terms of budgeting already for this, and we, we've just wrapped up the actual physical design documents. So, now it's this next phase of transition planning. So, it's a, it's a point taken.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, just, I, I, just to reinforce it, I think that, um, you know, there is gonna be some disruption, you know, and I know that, that teachers can be creatures of habit. And I think that the more notice we give them, and the more transparent we are in how we're creating this timeline and how we're moving them to their new departments, being able to say early in the process, and it's not the first meeting or the second meeting, maybe by the third meeting, we can say, we comfort, we feel comfortable that you'll have this planned by September fifteenth, you know. So, it's not, it's not something that once we get complete, and then we'll tell you the deadline that we're gonna release it to you. It's, now that we're here, we're putting a deadline on ourselves, on our own work, and we're saying, this is what we'll have it done, and we'll have it to you by. Um, I, that's how I would do it if I were in charge of the project, and I, I think it would be a good, a good method.
Yeah, I, I will do that. And I'm actually envisioning a, um, uh, like we do on our website, where we have the Woodland School updates of minutes and progress there. It's having a transition link for staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where we have meeting minutes that are taken, that are posted, frequently asked questions that are, if a staff member has a question, they just, they can send it to us, and we respond to it. And the more we can keep that dialogue open, it takes away the, any of those, I think, or minimizes to, uh, to some extent, the, the transitional anxiety.
And for parents too.
I was just gonna say, my only ask, my only additional add would be was, please make sure that it's as, as, as challenging and as, as, as much of a shift and a change than it's gonna be for our teachers. Parents are going to have the same level of apprehension and concern where, you know, this is, these are their, these are, these are still babies at this point.
It's gonna be everything from the drop-off, drop-off procedures, I mean, you name it. It's, it's fully comfort- there's a lot, there's a lot of, think about the little moving parts of the robot. There's a lot of moving parts, uh, to this piece of it, but we're ready to take that on.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I know I keep, keep hammering this, and I apologize. But I also think, I, dialogue is absolutely comforting, but I also think that absolute deadlines that everyone can rely on are, are just as comforting in a different way. So...
Got it. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so that's all for that, uh, piece. Item B is the Bye County Collaborative Agreement. Uh, you may recall sometime back, there was discussion about the Bye County Collaborative, uh, and an interest of some school districts who belong to our collaborative, who, uh, committee members who wanted to be part of the collaborative. Um, it had largely been superintendent's, uh, which is what it is now on this board. Uh, so the language now reflects, uh, the, that change. So, for example, there's, there's two changes I'm asking the committee to take a vote on tonight. They can do it in one vote, but the changes that are now as part of this agreement are, uh, the one that, uh, says on page three, section four, I do have a copy. I didn't, I don't know if it's included in your packet or not. On page three, in section four, governance, the first sentence now reads, each school committee executing this agreement shall annually appoint the superintendent of schools, and we've added, or school committee member to serve as, as its representative in the Bye County Collaborative Board of Directors. So, I represent the interests of Milford on this Board of Directors. Uh, but if at some point, uh, you've, you take a vote annually to do that, if at some point you feel that you'd rather represent the Bye County Collaborative as the Board of Directors, then you can vote to do that. So, which would be great for me if you choose to do that. So, so let me know if you're interested.
Can I nominate Donnie? Is that?
I think we're taking nominations for that. I think it'd be volunteers.
And I actually gonna provide you with, I don't have it, uh, this evening to present to you, but I'm gonna present to you, uh, at some point in the future, I'll have Deb Friedman, um, did this lot of work with our outplacement students. To tell you what, just the kind of savings we, we have as a school district, um, for being part of the collaborative. We, we, we're one of the districts that places students out. We save about four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, off the top of my head, uh, by being part of the collaborative, is if we have to send those students that were doing out of district, uh, to a private placement. Uh, so that's that piece of it. But also, uh, there's, uh, part of the bylaws require towns to be present at these meetings. And if they're not present at these meetings, then we need to remove them from this. So, in this case, uh, one community, um, is no longer going to be part of the collaborative. So, we need to remove that community's name, and therefore, we have to sign this, with that, with that community removed. So, there's those two changes. And, um, they can be done in a vote that the chairman can, uh, sign on behalf of the school committee dated, uh, today, and he can sign on behalf of that, so we have it on record. So, I just ask the committee to take a vote to make those, to accept those changes to the collaborative agreement.
So, take a motion.
I, I motion that we make those two amendments to the Bye County Collaborative Agreement, taken as a single motion.
Excellent. So, we have a motion from Patrick, second from Joe. All in favor? Go ahead and sign that one. All right.
And I do have a copy, I, I, again, I can't recall if you had it in your packet or not, but I do have a copy of the agreement. If you'd like to thumb through it, it's, uh, here at my seat. And then the final item is the, uh, for me, is Milford High School Music Department. Uh, as, uh, Paul Pelkman mentioned, uh, the music department has a concert tonight, so Nadine is there. We have, wanted to have this in the last committee meeting. This is the, uh, each, I think it's every other year, the high school takes a trip, uh, domestic trip, um, for their music department. It's a festival. It's a performance festival. And I, Melissa provided this to you, uh, earlier. Uh, wanted to ask the committee's support of this. Now, what I don't know yet is they need to have a number of students. They need to have about a hundred and thirty students sign up, uh, to make it within this price point. I'm talking to Nadine today, I believe we about have eighty-five students that are signed up for it. So, the trip may or may not run, depending on if we have enough, uh, students or not. But the timing between now and the time the school committee meets again, and when the deposit is due for the trip, uh, if we don't have a, a vote from the committee, I, I don't wanna put money out there of our kids that then, you know, is not refundable. So, I'd ask the committee to, uh, to approve this, uh, this tour. It's, uh, it's, it's well-planned. Uh, Nadine does a great job with these. Uh, again, we may or may not go on this trip, depending if we have enough student interest.
Any member have any questions?
Yeah, so this is, they're not missing school, correct? This is over April?
It's part of April vacation.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Okay.
Where, where is?
Uh, they're going to New York.
New York?
Actually, they leave on the Thursday. They leave on a Thursday. So, it'd be one day.
They'll miss one day of school, Patrick.
One day of school.
Mm-hmm. Miss the Thursday before April vacation.
Right. I believe, unless that Friday, is that Friday, a good Friday? I can't remember.
That's why I'm, I'm looking it up now. I can't tell from the calendar.
Let's see.
I should have looked this up before I came, and I apologize.
I, I, I should have done the same thing.
Don, did you have a question? Okay. I have a motion from Don. I know that we're still, a second from Mike.
Moving on then, I guess.
It is, it is a school, it is a school day.
It's a school day. It's a one-school day.
It is one-school day.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we will ask, who do have a motion a second? So, we will, we will call for a vote. Uh, all in favor? Uh, motion carries unanimously. Uh, certainly, good luck to our students, and they always do such a great job at these events, and certainly wish them the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Nothing else this evening.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Um, up next, we have the, uh, uh, reporter, the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Human Resources. Kathy, you're up.
I have for the committee's, uh, approval this evening, two warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
Okay. Take a motion from Don, second from Jen. All in favor? Motion carries.
The second warrant is in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, seventy-seven dollars and forty-one cents.
Take a motion from Mike, second from Joe. All in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, you also have the, uh, latest financial statement. There are no, uh, budget, um, areas that I need to be concerned about to report this evening, other than what we're already aware of. Uh, there is a personnel update, which is the, uh, latest appointments and hires from our previous meeting. It is for your information only. And we do have gifts.
We do have gifts.
It is Christmas.
It is.
How is appropriate.
You can call me Santa Claus this evening, 'cause we get two very ni- two very generous as they, always the community is, continues to be very generous to us. Uh, we have, first gift is for Barnes and Noble booksellers. Uh, it's a gift, um, to the family community network in the amount of, for, uh, contracted services and supplies in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. So, we'll take a motion to accept that from Don, second from Patrick. All in favor? Motion carries. Second gift is, uh, from Manuel and Denise, um, Caldira. It's a gift in kind. It's a gift of one iPad Air for a value of four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Extremely generous. Um, take a motion from Patrick, and a second from Jen. All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, make sure we send out thank you notes for both of those.
Very generous gifts.
Extremely generous. All right. And Kathy, does that finish up for you?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have, uh, the reporter, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. But Kevin is not here this evening.
Uh, yes.
Move this outside, or are you going in?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just table Kevin. No, uh, Kevin had a, a family matter this evening to tend to, so he apologized that he couldn't be here this evening. Uh, none of these items are pressing. He'll just table these till the January meeting.
Scott? If I could, um, Bob, just touch base with Kevin when we go to our January meeting. I'd, I'd like to hear the progress, um, on the curriculum map that we began discussing when he was hired, uh, a while back. Um, when we can expect that, what the progress is on.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Subcommittee updates. Athletics?
Nope. No, no updates.
Okay. Policy, we got yours earlier?
Yep, got it earlier. Patrick mentioned we reviewed for zero tolerance. Um, we'll have a few policies ready for the next school committee meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, wellness?
January seventh.
Safety and security?
Was supposed to be Monday. Something came up, and maybe reschedule it till the seventeenth, Bob, with January, I think it is.
Yeah, we removed that.
Yeah, it is in January though.
Okay. Uh, middle school reuse committee, we've not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is not until January. Um, Woodland School Building Project?
Um, we met last night, but I was working. So, hopefully, Bob, you were in attendance?
I was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could, could you please tell us what happened at the meeting? I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we have, uh, we're, next week, we go out to, uh, early bid on steel. Uh, so, we're moving now on this, uh, project. We had good updates from, uh, from, um, our architects and from, uh, Shamit, our builders, and everything's on task, on budget, ready to go. We have a, a surprise to find out the number. Uh, you know, the, the bidding process, when you, when you do the bid openings, um, it's an early bid for steel. We wanna get them working, you know, as soon as they possibly can. And they pre-qualify, our, our, our project management team pre-qualifies, so anybody who comes to the bid process will be eligible. I think we have over a hundred bids on steel. Yeah, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
So, they're looking for work out there.
Piece that still amazes me is that we're past the ninety percent completion mark, and we haven't put our first shovel in the ground. Still buying, bargaining, don't we? But that, I think that, you know, I think that does go into a pretty good demonstration of just how much work actually goes into a project of this size, that ninety percent of it happens before the first shovel goes in the ground, and all the efforts of everybody that's been involved in this. Patrick, I know you've been involved since the initial presentation to town meeting, um, Bob as well, and, and many other members of the committee, as well as the full, full building committee.
Yeah, I, I think it's, and it's funny, it's, it's a significant departure from the, the previous method of getting a building built in the Commonwealth, honestly, where all of this groundwork is done ahead of time. So, we're not playing catch-up. And it's funny, we were speaking about the change order process. And, um, the change orders, if anyone who survived the Brookside Reconstruction knows what the change order process was like, and it was, it added significant cost and, and not so much time, mostly cost that added to the, the renovation of that building. And we were discussing the change orders, and we had several veterans of the Brookside Building Committee on the School Building Committee for Woodland. And they're all very concerned about how the change order process was going to work, and it was, it was so simple. It was easy. There were so few anticipated changes that it was really, only if something went wrong. You know, if we found that, um, uh, the ground wasn't what it tested to be, or, you know, if a hurricane knocked the building, I mean, these are the types of things that were changing. They weren't, you know, big, giant change orders. So, it was, it was, it's, it's been, it's been great. A lot of groundwork was done. So, now we're, not that we're on autopilot, because there's a lot of work to do, and there's a lot of approvals to do. Um, but it's, it's been, it's been quite a process, and it's nice that it's sort of winding down.
Great. Thank you. Um, future agenda items. Uh, we already have the ask by Patrick for, to review the capital improvements as it, uh, as it relates. Patrick, do you have another item?
Yeah, I have another one.
Okay.
Um, so it, it came to my attention, um, recently, um, it started with one parent, then it became two. And I don't know if there are more or if there aren't more, but, um, it was concerns about how the everyday math program, um, was being used by students who are N I Ps. And so, I know that there was a meeting that happened with Meg, and she was gonna look into that. And so, um, I, I don't know when that's gonna bear fruit, and I imagine it's probably not this next meeting. But I'm sure, Bob, you, you probably know a little bit about it. I'm sure you speak so much with Meg. Um, I'd be interested in, in hearing a little bit about what we discover about everyday math relative to students who, um, avail themselves of our special education services.
Sure. I'll look into that with Meg.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to also to keep in the, um, you know, for future agenda, and you and I've had some conversation about it, but if we could try and get the head lice policy on to it.
I believe it's actually in the January.
It's the next one, yeah.
Yeah, it's already on the agenda for that one.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a few modifications to the school handbooks. We thought we'd wrap them all in, that being one of them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to old business. Any member have any old business? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, I would like to, um, present to the school committee this evening for your consideration. At our last meeting, Lucy Jenkins, the Director of Shining Star, presented to you, uh, uh, cost, tuition cost, um, breakout, as well as increasing the time of, uh, the Shining Star program. And, uh, I knew there was a cost impact to moving forward with that. It was approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars on the transportation side. And since then, uh, Lenny and I have worked out, and to Lenny's credit, he was the transportation guru. He was able to capture not quite the full capacity for time that Lucy was hoping to acquire, which was approximately three and a half hours. But Lenny was able to find two and a half hours in our transportation contract, so there would be a zero impact to moving forward with a two and a half hour increase into our Shining Star program. Uh, it's not the hundred percent that Lucy was looking for, but, um, Lenny brought it back to Lucy, and she was happy with that and would like to move forward. and she was happy with that and would like to move forward with the committee's approval with the tuition increase of approximately ten dollars at the max, thirty dollars a month, which has not been addressed in over, I don't know, I think it was ten years. So it comes out to one percent a year. So with that, the other issue is that, that would be phase one of getting to where Lucy would like to be. But when the new school opens at Woodland, we are going to have to, as a committee, within our budget, bring on two additional buses.
Sure.
So when we make that move at that time, we will bring Shining Star to where Lucy wants it to be. So within two years, Lucy will have the time in the program that she needs and would hope to be at. So with that, I was hoping for the, for Lucy to be able to acquire new students and move forward with her program. If the school committee would consider a vote to approve the new Shining Star program.
Make a motion.
Motion from Mike, second from Joey. Any discussion or any conversation before we?
I think that's great that we can do that for nothing. The transportation.
Thank you to Mr. Morcom.
Yes, that's it.
I was going to say Kathy, if you could reach out to Lenny and give him a special thank you from all of us. He's always there trying to help everybody get around and he does a great job. Please tell him that. Thank you.
I will.
I know. Len has sharpened his pencil so many times for us and fixed so many problems. I, I mean, I can't, I can't say enough good things.
It's amazing there's still pencil left.
Oh, it's unbelievable. I don't know how he does it or where he gets the time and the money from.
He's a real ass.
And the patience.
And the patience. But yeah, Len is just, he's an amazing asset. We're so lucky to have him and I'm so happy that Lucy has the time that she wants because she's really going to put the good years. I couldn't be more happy. That's great. This is, this is great.
So we do have a motion in a second. So we'll take a vote now. And it is with pleasure. Tell you that it is not passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Alright. Any other members have any old business? Alright, next item would be adjournment. So we wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new years. We won't, we will not re-adjourn again, we will not reconvene again until the, until the new year. So with that being said.
Ho, ho, ho.
Ho, ho, ho. We'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion from Mike, second from Joey. All in favor? Good night, everyone. Thank you.